Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the regular meeting of the DeKalb City Council, January 13, 2020. Prior to the start of our meeting tonight, I would like to indicate to anyone in the audience who would like to speak to any item on our agenda tonight, or for that matter, any item not on our agenda, to kindly fill out a speaker request form there just outside the back of the room. Give that speaker request form to our city clerk Lynn Fazekas, and we'll get you on at the appropriate time. Just a reminder also that the Item D, Public Participation, if you'd like to speak to whatever item you'd like to speak on tonight at that point, you may, or you may wait until we get to the item on the agenda, at which time you may make those remarks. And we would like to ask anyone who is going to speak tonight to try to keep those comments to three minutes or less. So having said that, I'm going to ask our city clerk Lynn Fazekas to call the roll, please.
Morris.
Here.
Fanouken.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Perkins.
Here.
McAdams.
Here.
Verbic.
Here.
Favor.
Here.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
Eight present.
Thank you. During the comments during the State of the City, I remarked on what a great job our city manager, Bill Nicholas, has done in comprising a group of great department heads. Our newest department head is our chief building officer, Don Harper, and I'd like to ask Don if you'd kindly come up and lead us in tonight's Pledge of Allegiance. Our chief building official, Don Harper.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Don. Item C on the agenda, the approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions to tonight's agenda as printed? If not, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Smith. Any comment? If not, roll call, please.
Morris.
Here.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight I.
Tonight's agenda is approved as printed. Now, at this point, we have public participation. Is there anyone who would like to speak to any item that is on the agenda, or any item for that matter not on the agenda at this time? If so, kindly raise your hand. Come on up. And again, if you'd like to wait until the item is presented tonight, you may do that also.
Thank you, Mayor.
Good morning.
My name is Brian Oster. I own OC Creative here in town, as well as support a lot of nonprofits and chair the DeKalb Chamber as well. Love the community. One of the reasons I bought OC was because of the community and the business outreach that we have. I'm speaking generally to Resolutions J-1, 2, and 3. They involve nonprofits that are not 501(c)(3), the ones that are not having the ability to, in my opinion, make up for funding lost, for example, those in J-4. Specifically, J-1 is the DeKalb County Economic Development Corporation, and J-2, the Dekalb County Convention and Visitors Bureau. I guess, in my opinion, and I don't have the numbers, as I don't, I'm not involved in the committees themselves, but I know those two have a direct impact to the income and revenue that the city makes. And I know specifically, the DCEDC gets a matching grant from a county, as does the DCCVB, the Visitors Bureau. Every dollar the city gives, or doesn't give, is matched or not matched by the state. So if it is any consideration, I'd love to see those numbers stay where they were at the 2019 levels, because every $1,000 that's cut is $2,000 to their budget. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian. Appreciate those comments. And we'll get to that item, obviously, on the agenda a little bit. Anybody else at this point? If not, let's move along to presentations. We have one presentation tonight, and that's a proclamation that I'd like to read, if I may. This is a proclamation, 2020 Census and the Complete Count Committee. Whereas the City of DeKalb is preparing for the 2020 United States Census, and whereas the City of DeKalb wishes to obtain a complete count of all residents, including the hard-to-count population within the community, and whereas that hard-to-count population consists of renters, students, low-income households, African-Americans, Hispanics, the homeless, elderly, and children under five years old, and whereas the City of DeKalb has formed a Complete Count Committee in coordination with the U.S. Census Bureau to count all residents, including that hard-to-count population, and whereas the role of the Complete Count Committee is to reach out to all residents, including the hard-to-count population in our community, to provide them with information and facts about why being counted in the 2020 census is critical, and whereas the City of DeKalb encourages all citizens, organizations, businesses, congregations, and cultural and educational institutions to participate in the 2020 U.S. Census. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the City of DeKalb endorses the efforts of the Complete Count Committee to obtain a complete count in our community, and requests all citizens to participate in the 2020 census. In witness thereof, I have heretofore set my hand and caused the seal of the City of DeKalb to be affixed this 13th day of January 2020. Signed, Jerry Smith, Mayor. I'd like to present this to Assistant City Manager Ray Munch, who along with Jason Blumenthal, Adam Grubbs, and Joanne Nourous have been very, very instrumental in getting this CCC Committee off the ground, and we wish you continued success in that. And it's so critical to this community, as it is to most municipalities across the country, in seeing that we count each and every one of our residents. So Ray, I'm going to give this to you, and I appreciate your help. Thank you. Okay, we'll move right along to appointments. Appointments can be done with an omnibus vote of the council. Is this okay? You've had a chance to take a look at this. Okay, let me read the following titles of these appointments. Number one, appointment of Brian Sholly to the Economic Development Commission for a three-year term through December 31, 2022. Number two, appointment of Trixie O'Flaherty to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a five-year term through December 31, 2024. Number three, appointment of Max Maxwell as Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission for a two-year term through December 31, 2021. Number four, appointment of Jeff Richardson as Chair of the Economic Development Commission for a three-year term through December 31, 2022. And number five, appointment of Claire Crone as Chair of the Citizens Environmental Commission, and there is no term limit on that particular chairmanship. I'd ask a motion to approve these mayoral appointments and reappointments, please.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman Perkins. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight I.
Thank you very much. Those appointments and reappointments have been approved. We move now to Item G on the agenda, Consent Agenda. All items on the Consent Agenda are enacted by one motion. There's no separate discussion of these items unless requested by a council member, in which event the item will be removed from the Consent Agenda. I'd like to read each of these items, please, on this Consent Agenda and ask for your approval. Number one, minutes of the Special Joint Meeting of the City Council and Finance Advisory Committee of November 18, 2019. Number two, minutes of the Special Joint Meeting of the City Council and Finance Advisory Committee of November 20, 2019. Number three, minutes of the Regular City Council Meeting of December 9, 2019. Number four, accounts payable and payroll through December 23, 2019, in the amount of Number five, accounts payable and payroll through January 13, 2020, in the amount of Number six, investment and bank balance summary through October 2019. And finally, number seven, year-to-date revenues and expenditures through October 2019. I entertain a motion to approve this Consent Agenda.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Smith. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight I.
Thank you. The Consent Agenda is approved as read and as presented. There are no public hearings tonight. We move on to Item I on the agenda, Considerations. Number one, consideration of proposed transit changes to Route 12, the Elburn Shuttle Service, and Route 19, Park 88 and Southern DeKalb Bus Service. Before I turn this over to City Manager Nicholas, I'd like to see if anyone would like to speak to this item. I don't believe so. No? Okay, Bill, if you would make a few comments on this, please.
Thank you. I'll just make a few, Your Honor. The council, according to the framework of our mass transit system, has the authority to review and approve route changes. And there are two minor ones before you tonight. One was prompted by the interest of some of our NIU students and residents for an earlier shuttle option between DeKalb and the Elburn train station, and that one does have a cost of about $23,616. However, the downstate operating grant and NIU's share of the local funding will, if the council is so inclined, cover that cost. And that is Route 12. Route 19, which is a fairly long route, and it touches the south side of DeKalb and also moves in and out of the Schnucks parking area, is the other piece. And this is a concern that came to us from some local residents, but also, Councilmember McAdams suggested that we look into this. And there is a minor routing adjustment that would make a difference to people who otherwise were waiting 45 minutes to an hour to make a complete route, and then still not getting down to Schnucks. So this will incorporate a stop right in the Schnucks parking area on the outbound portion of Route 19. And this will also allow more frequent access to the eastbound spots along Taylor Street, where some people get on and get off the bus. We think this is a good fix, and I thank Marcus Cox and his staff for putting this together. We ask the council to support both of these.
Thank you. Just a reminder that this is one of six considerations that we have tonight. No action is necessary, is necessarily going to be taken on these considerations, but at this point, we would like to see if anyone would like to speak to this. Anybody on our council? Alderman Fanouken.
Just like to say, particularly with the Elburn stop, you know, we started the service recently. We knew there was demand. I think this just proves that demand is going to grow, and I think it's a great addition of the service. And I, you know, say the same thing basically about the extra stops at Schnucks on the other route.
Alderman McAdams.
I'd also just like to say thank you again to Marcus for his diligent work to get this done, and acknowledge that resident Fred Menke was the first one to bring this to my attention. And it's nice to see these kinds of things where the residents speak out, and we can get some things done that the residents actually want to get done.
Alderman Morris.
I absolutely agree. This is great. I wonder if there's any way we can't move forward with this a little more quickly, so...
What was that?
I wonder if we can't move forward with this a little more quickly, seeing as I don't see that anyone's opposed to it, and it sounds like a great idea.
Right. And so far as I know, Marcus, correct me if I'm wrong, but this minor route deviation can be done simply by your consensus here tonight, just to correct what the mayor said earlier.
There seemed to be consensus in that we move as quickly as possible in this.
In this case, it doesn't cost the city directly any additional dollars.
Okay, good. Thank you. Appreciate the feedback and appreciate the input from council. Number two, consideration of several suggestions for revisions to Chapter 38, Intoxicating Liquors. We have a number of items under this, but we do have one speaker who would like to address this issue, and that is Cameron Die. So Cameron, if you'd go to the podium, please, introduce yourself and make your comments, please.
Okay. Hi, my name's Cameron Die. I'm one of four owners of Aroma's Hookah Bar, and we purchased the place last February, so we're coming up on one year. Things were going great all the way up until July, when the governor changed the law to only allow 21 and up for any type of tobacco use. So with that, we had our records looked through on how much revenue we were making, and after our totals were made, we were making about $10,000 to $11,000 less since that change. We put together a petition for BYOB, and we had 63 signatures, which I presented for approval. The demand is out there. It's our number-one phone call we get, aside from people asking if they can be 18 to come in, which they cannot. So those are two main questions we normally get. Our business has slowed down drastically to the point where we think that if no change was made, we will not be in business come the end of the year. We did call several hookah bars throughout the entire state to see if it does exist, and it does exist in four hookah bars: Jack's Hookah Bar up in Machesney Park, House of Hookah out in Naperville, I believe, Hookah Joint, and Cairo Knights, which I believe those are in Chicago. And their charge per head to allow people to come in and drink while they smoke is an average of $4 to $5 per person to inquire on that. So since they allow it, we figured that we could have it out here, and there's no other competing competition within a 30-mile radius. So thank you.
Thank you, Cameron. Okay, with that being said, Bill, any comment?
The background touches on three ideas that had been circulating amongst council and others in the last month or so leading up to the winter holidays. And so I put it on the agenda to see what kind of direction we can get. This is just the first opportunity to discuss this, ultimately, since much of the suggestions surround licensed liquor license holders, and they, I don't think are well-represented here tonight, but some will probably want to weigh in at some point along the way and be bringing this back. So there are three things. One was to allow persons under 21 to be admitted to bars. Currently, the law, as you know, requires that they be accompanied by a parent or guardian of 21 years of age or older. I put in two examples of how our code currently deals with BYOB licenses for liquor. I believe in Mr. Die's establishment, you have to be 21 years of age or older to be in there to smoke tobacco products. So it's a little bit of a hybrid of the questions that posed this item in the first place. And finally, there was some interest. There's a local owner of a fitness facility who wanted to know if the council would be open to the idea of entertaining a license opportunity there. All of these have some impact, positive and some negative. There are pros and cons to each. This is a university town. In your background for this agenda item tonight, you can see there was a little bit of research done, by no means exhaustive, of what's been happening around Illinois university and college towns, and about half have experimented with this, and half have stayed on 21 years of age or older. If they're, let me just focus for a minute on lowering the age of allowing people to be inside licensed restaurant establishments or bars. If you're under 21 and you're near a bar where they're serving alcohol, obviously, the servers hired by the private owners and managers are going to have to be on their toes to make sure that these people are carded. And it does put some additional demand on our police department, which would probably, as they did in the old days, the last time this was tried, have to make some occasional sweeps through our licensed establishments to make sure that everything is copacetic. So there's a lot more to divine and to discuss here. I'm just wondering if you want us to go any further than this, and if you do, this will probably come up as a consideration on a future agenda.
What we might want to do, Bill, and I would suggest this, that there are, again, those three items, the age, the under-21 admission to bars, and number two would be the BYOB liquor license, and the other would be the fitness facility liquor license. Let's stay with that, under-21. I know this was brought to council consideration at the request of a couple of our council members, and so at this point, I would entertain any discussion or any thoughts as it relates to the possibility of moving forward on this. Alderman McAdams.
I'm curious what Chief Petrogalo thinks of the proposal and the request for additional police services.
We're conducting some outreach to other municipalities to basically gauge the impact on them, not only for public safety issues, but for operational necessities that, you know, they need to be concerned about. So based on those results, I'd be happy to bring them back in a future council meeting, but obviously, the concern is public safety and impact on operations.
I thought the background that was provided to council was, as Bill suggested, wasn't very exhaustive, but I thought it was pretty good. What it told me is it's a mixed bag out there in what they're doing in Champaign and Carbondale and Macomb, and some of the other communities that do, in fact, allow 18-, 19-year-olds in establishments that are serving beer, wine, and liquor. So any other comments or questions? Alderman Morris.
I have two questions. First, why did we pick the age 19 instead of 18? And then another question I have, maybe Mr. Die can answer, or someone, but I'm wondering, do they not allow hookah bars to serve alcohol also? I'm wondering if that's like a separate thing. And then I guess, anecdotally, I guess I want to add, you know, I visited Champaign recently and visited a bar there and spoke with an owner that I was familiar with, and it really seems like this younger generation is shifting away from drinking, period. So a lot of the bars are having a very hard time staying open at all, especially with the opportunity to meet other people through apps and no longer needing to go out to do that. So I imagine that that suggests that the enforcement portion of this may not be as significant as we might have thought five or 10 years ago even.
So two or three good questions there. Taking the last one first, I think you're right that there are other opportunities for people to gather and to hang for an hour, hour and a half, play games, talk, catch up. And we're finding, even in DeKalb downtown, people are not necessarily looking to drink while they're doing this. So that isn't, if you're selling, if your business is selling liquor, then that, you'll register that. But it may mean for us that we are open to other opportunities. There are, and they're out there. We don't need to talk about it now. As for, your first question was about the...
Yeah, why 19?
Why 19? Just looking at the recent, little bit of research that we did, it tended to be the lower end of the range, 19 to 21. It would not be old enough to drink under our code, but we saw other university towns that were allowing 19 and 20 years old, and that was mostly what drove that. There were a few that were 18, but 19 seems to be the wider choice amongst those that have experimented with going lower.
And the last question was about the hookah bars and...
Yeah, just currently, we don't have a classification for that, so the council will create a classification if you so desire.
Can Mr. Die answer? Is that okay?
Sure.
So we did research on selling liquor as well, and my partner, Mike Speake, he told me with the state of Illinois, it's an 80/20 rule. We have to sell 80% of tobacco and 20% of, you know, snacks, candy, pops, drinks like that. Otherwise, we can lose our tobacco license through the state. So we have to stick with that. I do know other states do allow sale of drinks inside their establishments, but none in Illinois. But they do have BYOB.
What you'd be looking for, though, Cameron, would be a BYOB where someone brings in their...
Yeah, bring in your own, and, you know, the police department's right across the street. We've invited them several times to come over, and you can have a 10% like discount to come in if they wish. So, hey, it's a stressful job, you know? Some people seem to have to take up the stress. We welcome it.
Alderman Favor.
I know visiting other smoking establishments that I've seen, the bar portion is like airtight, completely sealed from the smoking section. So, I mean, just to have a bar available, that's what I've seen in other locations, might not be what you would need to do, but, so to have a bar in a smoking establishment is, they really try to separate those two right now. So that would be, but I'm actually, I'm in favor of, I would be in favor of all three of these. I think the under-21, it's on the books right now. It's not being enforced. But, you know, if a person 21 and a person 20 years old wanted to go out to a bar and grill and have dinner, that's not permissible today. So again, it's not being enforced, but I think we should then update our laws if that's the case. So I'm in agreement, and I'm for all three of these.
Alderman Fanouken.
Well, one of my questions would be, how do some of these other university towns provide, not necessarily enforced, maybe isn't the right word, but identification once you're in the bar? Are the patrons over at 21 and over, they have a wristband so they don't know they're over 21? Because if you give them to the under-21s, well, it's easy enough to take it off. And I think there is a difference between going into a restaurant that has a bar license and going into a bar. I mean, I can understand if somebody were to go into Fatty's, for example, and get a meal, I think that's okay, but maybe not to go into, I can't remember the name of the place. It's been so long since I've been in. Huh? Who?
Molly's.
Molly's, or the one right here downtown?
Stanley's.
Part of town, you're thinking of part of town.
Stanley's?
Yeah, Stanley's, thank you. I should know that. My daughter goes there. But anyway, we have, like Stanley's, I think that's the difference. Yeah.
Alderman Morris.
Do you want to go first? I was just going to say, I think when I was a young Marine, I grew up in a town where young Marines were allowed into the bars with the, those over 21, and they just drew giant X's on their hands. So with permanent marker.
Which could be washed off, though.
Alderman Verbic.
I'm also in favor of all of them. The concerns I've heard from Ward 6 are that establishments should have food available in general if they're going to support, if we're going to support this rule. So in other words, I think there's some hesitation. If it's just a nightclub serving alcohol only and no food, generally speaking from Ward 6 there, they're looking for that expectation of a kitchen or food truck. Ward Six there, they're looking for that expectation of a kitchen or food truck adjacent to whatever club that may be.
Alderman Morris.
Sorry, I just want to add that I also am in support of all three of these, hands down, no problem. I do think that X's on the hands with permanent marker work well. All you have to do is show your hand, and even if you've washed it off, it's pretty evident that you just, that it's still there, there's something left. Sorry, I was thinking of what you had just addressed.
Food.
The food, yes. I mean, from my experience, and probably not exhaustive, but my experience in DeKalb is that we don't even have a nightclub scene where somewhere only serves drinks. Even Stanley's serves pizza and, you know, has, has nice space to hang out in, so.
From what I sense here, City Manager Nicholas, is that there seems to be consensus that we ought to have some ordinances brought forward to the city council on all three, although we have not discussed the fitness facility liquor license. Does anybody sense that that is anything different that you want to discuss from the other two, or is it pretty much the same? Okay. Yes?
I just have one question. In our code currently, if you fall under one of the many classifications, then you have to basically do everything that's in that classification. I just talked to a few of the liquor license holders in the last couple of weeks as we were coming up with some language, and they wondered if they had to buy in, so to speak, you know, could they opt out? If you're already a license, whatever the license is, and you really don't want to staff up, or whatever they perceive their requirements to be to do this right, would they have to serve persons under 21? And I'd like to bring that question back to you. I don't know what your immediate reaction is to that, but that was a question I was asked.
Alderman Verbic.
I think just a general review of our liquor code in entirety, shall we say, would be of value to us. I used to get calls around the holidays, well, why are, why are these places forced to close this early on a holiday? How did, how did that come about? And I think it would be worth our while to take a look.
We might be the only place in the world, we're not in the world, I'm sure, but that closes on New Year's Eve and Christmas Eve at 7:00.
Right.
So, yeah.
Alderman Fanouk.
In response to your question, City Manager, I think that if a establishment decided to stay 21 and over only, I don't see that being a problem. I think that, that should be the business owner's right, that this is a privilege that we would allow, but not mandate that an 18, 19, 20-year-old would come in.
Is that generally the...
Is there agreement on that?
Yeah, okay, I see that. What I'd like to do, if you're okay, bring this back as a first reading in an ordinance form, look at the, it might take a little longer if we're going to look at the whole code, and it does need, from stem to stern, a review. And also probably have a public hearing on this. Probably should get an opportunity for everybody to speak to this before we proceed any further in terms of action. Okay, thank you.
I think there are some thoughts, there are some thoughts out there. I've talked with a couple of different owners, and they have concerns as we expand the scope of this, you know? At face value, you know, I was reading over the, the fitness club one, and the way it's phrased, it sounds simple to extend just a little bit, but it has big impact on the existing owners, you know, who have invested in their businesses, legacy type, I'm thinking legacy type businesses. You know, so they're, they have concerns. So I think the public hearing would be a great idea.
Thank you. Alderman Morris.
Can I just add one more thing about the 18, 19 age? I feel like it would be so much easier, logically speaking, for both waitstaff and bouncers at a door to be able to identify quickly with an ID card, the age 18. But doing the mental work as you're trying to let people through and trying to get people served, of identifying what number is 19 rather than 18 feels like a, yeah, very much.
I mentioned to the chief, one of the considerations there that I believe is played into the formulating ordinances in other communities is that if you make it 18, you're potentially allowing high school age students into the establishments.
Gotcha.
So are we comfortable with the 19 then?
Yeah.
In terms of what City Manager Nicholas will bring forward? Again, we made no firm decisions tonight, other than the fact that there seems to be consensus that we want to move these three forward to us.
If we look at the whole code, it's not going to come back on the 27th, there's just not enough time to do that justice. We just have a week, basically, throw it together. I think that would be a disservice to all concerned, so we'll bring it back as soon as we can.
Very good, thank you. Okay, let's move along to our third consideration tonight, and that's the consideration of a tax increment financing, TIF funding request from the Bai family for the rehabilitation of the property at 206 East Lincoln Highway. Before I turn this over to City Manager Nicholas to expand on the background that he's already provided, we have one person who would like to speak to this, and that is Steve Capitan.
First of all, I'd like to thank the Bai family for their contribution to DeKalb with their longtime operation of Rositas and Eduardo's Restaurants. They've been a staple of restaurants in the city of DeKalb, specifically the downtown. But with the closing of Eduardo's, this proposal looks more like an enhancement of the sales price of the property, which in my view would be an inappropriate use of TIF funds. Also, I think that we should allow the city's investment in the Pappas projects to have an impact on the housing market for downtown before using more TIF tax dollars for apartments. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. With that, City Manager Nicholas, you've given us quite a bit of background on this.
I have, but I think there are people here to speak to this tonight. Isn't there somebody from the family here tonight?
Rosa.
Hello, good evening. My name is Rosa Bai, and I am here representing our family on behalf of our 206 East Lincoln Highway building. We are looking for TIF funding for our second floor redevelopment. My family started acquiring six downtown buildings starting in 1972. Rositas Mexican Restaurant was first, and then went on to acquire two more buildings with the blast buildout in 1992, with a total of 5,000 square feet of restaurant. We have been in business at this location for 47 years. 5,000 square feet at this time, at that location, is quite a large restaurant in today's market. But the reason that we had to do that, for one major reason, was that the Chapter 38 liquor ordinance required at that time that you had to be at least, at least 3,000 square feet in order to have hard liquor. So, in order to acquire hard liquor and sell that, you had to invest more into your building. And that was the only way that you could do it in that timeframe. And we did so with both our buildings, which are both downtown, and still downtown. And those were the rules at that time, and we abided by that. And it was a positive thing overall in our, in our ability to keep on expanding. In between those 47 years, our Eduardo's Restaurant moved to its 214 East Lincoln Highway building, then 218 East Lincoln Highway building, and then acquiring its 206 building, Lincoln Highway, which housed the original Honey Girl building, which was a women's department store, which I went to when I was younger, than most of us did. So that was a department store, it was not a restaurant. So that was a 5,000 square feet of property that had to go from a department store into a, expanded our kitchen and redid the whole interior to create what is currently there, which was our expansion on our third building of the restaurant, the bar, and our banquet room. And that investment was 100% on ours, which cost at least $900,000 at that time, between the cost of the buildout and the building. The total of that square foot was 8,000, which was the biggest of the two. And currently, it sits at 6,500, 6,500 square feet. We did sell one building, the 218 building, two years ago. We have invested a total, a total of at least $2 million between buildings, buildouts, in the central business district. We have stayed within the central business district. We decided not to go to Cicumor Road. We decided to stay where we were at because it was in the best interest, and that's where we started, and we had faith that that's where we were going to do very well, which we did. 100% of our investment, the 2 million, we received 10,000 in facade improvements over those 47 years from this city in TIF funds in prior decades. And then I do have some pictures of the upper second floor of 206 East Lincoln Highway, and on the back of that, I do say, do have it printed in which direction that portion of the upper floor is pointing, north or south, so forth. And I'm just going to split up a little bit here. Now, that originally, when we purchased it, that was split up, on one half was a three-bedroom, a three-bedroom apartment that was at $400 a month, which was in the worst shape that you can imagine on the upstairs. The other half of the building was for studio, part, for studio, a park, excuse me, for studio art studios for someone to rent at $65 a month. The front of that building originally had the second floor, Honey Girl, a second where you can get sales, so forth, items. That was never rented out. So actually, after a few years, we decided it was not in our best interest to keep that property that way, because it was in such bad shape and building, it just did not suffice what we would like to have above our very well-run and doing extremely well restaurant, and in the safety of our bottom portion. So, that was what it was. We gutted it out, and that is how it looks, and it, it has been that way for over 20 years, with no increased EAV in that timeframe. We are looking to do four apartments on the second floor. We did express and have preliminary plans to reinvest in the second floor a few decades ago. The city administrator and a couple of different mayors did not wish to open up the cash box of TIF for existing building owners. So there sat our second floor with no additional EAV. The city adapted TIF in 1986. In 2008, council made an amendment to the TIF for a redevelopment plan and to extend TIF for 13 years, which is coming up. Under that study, if you go back and can look it up under the city website, the downtown buildings had a 77% ratio of being at least 35 years or older, and that was in 2008. Our building is over 100 years old. The financial aspect of our request is as follows. We are asking for a 50% of the project cost. Two criterias that you bring in to assess the investment. One is the EAV. The EAV on the investment will increase assessed values by 21,000 at the current assessed value. That in return will pay back the TIF investment in less than 10 years, plus one year of estimated sales tax, so 72,458. The equivalent of those two categories will equal 282,438. 50% faster than your 20-year forgivable loan criteria. The number two criteria that you look at return investment is your sales tax. The first floor will require us to find a sustainable tenant. To obtain a tenant of that caliber, caliber, excuse me, will require us to put of our own money, at least 150,000 into the redevelopment of that first floor. I honestly do believe that that corner is so vital of the three corners that are up for sale currently within that block. We have the largest patio, the most money put into that patio by my family between the fountain, the pillars of masonry alone cost 60,000. That was done at our cost. And that will always stay with DeKalb no matter what. That fountain will always stay here no matter who owns it. That will always be here. Do you realize, so many people take so much, have so much fun just standing in front of it and taking pictures. And that's, that to me is, is taking, it's taking pride in what you have and taking possession of your downtown and saying, this is, this is part of where, this is my home, this is my hometown, this is my downtown, this is why I want to come downtown. There are, these are the things that make a difference, such as the Egyptian. And I thank you for giving the Egyptian the, the need of TIF to expand on that gem. That investment with the first floor would require a seven-year lease from a tenant. And my family's not interested in having someone come in and say, I want to sell, you know, I want to have a bar, I want to sell pretzels, and just because they have, you know, a few thousand dollars that we're going to say yes to it, because it's not in our business interest to do so. What we're looking for is someone who is sustainable, and when I say sustainable in a lease aspect, is that you have experience of having restaurants, not just one, but a few. You've been in it at a while, it's not just a one-year thing. And two, you have to have capital. You will not last in this business less than one year if you don't have it. And to have someone going in and out is not in the best interest of not only my family, but in the best interest of that building and the downtown. So that, that is, those are things that we look for and are looking for. My family is willing to invest close to 700,000 for the redevelopment of 206 East Lincoln Highway. We cannot, and we will not, invest more money unless we can get the assistance from TIF. TIF, that's what TIF was for. Every time you go, if you go and read about TIF and how it's defined, how it is brought to a community, a blighted area is one of the criterias. Vacancy is a criteria. Code is a criteria. So, those are just things that come into play with TIF. But not only, if you, if you, if you're able to do the project, and obviously, you've, you've made that commitment by doing the Pappas' projects, which I'm happy for. But why can't, Capitan, why can't an independent also have that opportunity? Why does it have to be Stig Ives, you know, millions? Can't it be an independent that's been down there for 30-some years? Get a piece of that, to redevelop that building? Isn't that the basis of TIF? To create more assessed value, to create more real estate tax, to create more TIF down the road? I thank you very much. I'm very, I'm very happy that, as a family, that I've seen you guys do that commitment, finally, of doing those developments downtown, because no one's done it. And how long have we been in the TIF? 1986, we're in 2020. And why so long? You know, it's going to cost much more in today's market, and you already know that. But, you know, there's so much there if it just gets the attention and need. But, you know, there's so much there if it just gets the attention and needs. And you can't do that type of build-out because that type of build-out in a downtown, it requires so much extra dollars, at least 30%, at the 40% at the minimum, to create that investment in order to create a higher EAV. And that's what you want. And you want more people downtown. And you want the right demographics downtown. And you want the right tenant underneath. You know, we've been waiting for that. And you're pushing, you're going in that direction. Don't stop. And that's all. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Rosa. Bill, your comments, please.
Thank you. Well, I thank Rosa and the Baii family for their presentation and their interest over a lifetime in our downtown in the city of DeKalb. There is extensive background here, because I was trying to do justice to both the history and also the ask, and to place it in the context of other downtown redevelopment. And I'll just briefly say that you have what I consider to be a thoughtful projection of what, and I think conservative, of what the additional, the four apartments would bring in terms of EAV, increased EAV for, for 2006 East Lincoln Highway, and also what would happen. We, we're going to assume, I think we can all assume, that the first floor of 2006 is not going to be vacant for the 20-year term of the promissory note. So there's a modest, I think, representation of what the sales tax return would be over, really, the thinnest annual schedule that I could come up with that, that was plausible. So that's before you. When I wrote this, I didn't know what the Baii family target was. Now we know. And I look for your direction.
Comments? Alderman Faver.
So I just want to say thank you very much for your service in the community. This is exactly what we've been asking for as a city council. We've been asking for projects. We've been asking for people to come and make an investment. You've already had an investment in DeKalb, but an additional investment into our city. So I, I support this. I think this is, again, it's great. I think we're, we're starting to see progress being made downtown, additional investments being made. This is just another additional investment in our downtown that we, as a city, want to support. And I'm, I'm in support of this project.
Alderman Fanouken.
As Alderman Faver just said, you know, we wanted investment and reinvestment in downtown. That'd be, Baiis obviously have, have done that over the years. I couldn't tell you how many times that my wife and I have eaten in a restaurant, going back, I think, to the first or second week that Rositas was open. So I too am strongly in favor of this project, and I would like to encourage my fellow council members to move this along.
Alderman Morris.
I just want to be clear on what I understand the project to be. We're talking about funding a TIF project for the second floor only, correct?
Correct.
And my follow-up question to that is, do we have any idea if the first floor is TIF-eligible?
It would be, yeah. Well, it depends what, there's, the project did not include the first floor, any remodeling on the first floor and so forth. And we don't fund personal, what would be considered personal items, you know, tables, chairs, kitchen stock, and so forth. So if there was some, a project in the first floor, it would be the possibility that, let's say it's another restaurant, as Rosa had projected, and let's say it's a different approach, tear things out, add more electrical, that what the TIF goes for are the new mechanicals, new electrical, new structural design costs related to that.
And I guess I, I'm curious from council, I think I heard her say 50%, and I wonder where council, what council's thinking about that. Because I...
Alderman Faver.
So I, I did hear 50% as well. I'm, I'll tell you, and as we've gone through the different projects, I'm, I'm more in favor of the proposed 30%. I wouldn't be opposed, as Alderman Morris had mentioned, if, if there was expenses on the first floor that were eligible for TIF expenses, I would be in support of those in terms of maintaining that 30%, but increasing the coverage of the expenses, if that makes sense.
That's exactly what I'm saying.
But personally, I'm, I'm more at the, at the 30%, but if you included the entire building as a, as a whole project, which might cover more expenses, if you're going to make that investment anyway, you know, I would, I would be happy to, you know, I'm saying myself, I would feel comfortable covering those as eligible TIF expenses that they would be.
Any other comments? Alderman Verbic.
Questions that came up over the weekend from the ward, were, sixth ward, were, if the Baiis could comment on, for example, instead of utilizing TIF, the question posed to me by a couple of residents was, what about going to a bank? And the bank loaning the money at a, at a particular interest rate, of course, but you'd have this future income from apartments and, and from the tenant downstairs that would pay toward that loan and hopefully show a return on investment. Is that even a thought, or is that even possible? Or is that why TIF comes into play, is that it's just not something that a bank would cover for you over the long term?
You're saying it's 100% of our investment without any TIF funding?
Correct.
Correct?
Right.
Sorry.
Okay. Well, that's just it. When we looked at this project even two decades ago, it, it didn't make any financial sense as a business people. We would have been better off buying a piece of flat land in DeKalb and creating four apartments. The cost of it would have been a lot less. So, because we didn't get the assistance from the city, we just couldn't, it just stayed as is, which is, as it looks, blighted, with no up to code on that portion. That, that's part of, I mean, those things cost more. When you take an existing building, it's going to cost you quite a bit more for, to make, to actually build it out versus an empty lot. That's a given. Two, you're also faced with the downtown with certain ordinances, excuse me, fire, certain codes, building codes, that also up the price of per square footage on an existing building in the downtown area. So you're faced with a lot more fi, financial roadblocks, per se, as an investor. So as much as we want to invest, did back then, do today, it doesn't make any business sense to do so. It, we're just better to leave that building as is. But is that, is that your goal? To leave it blighted? Is that the goal of TIF? I thought it wasn't. So this is where, you know, where do you decide what is and what isn't? I mean, that, every time I read TIF, it's, the criteria is all there, but yet all our buildings downtown never got the opportunity, for political reasons of whatever, I don't know. The only thing that has happened in the downtown area that actually happened was the redevelopment, or if you want to call it redevelopment, 2008, 2008, was the Van Buren Plaza, the improvements of infrastructure within our downtown scape, the improvements, excuse me, getting rid of some parking, and that was it. We tore down the Red Building, that was part of the TIF funding, and we tore down Ralph's. So what else have we done downtown, you know, people? What else have we done with all that TIF that was created? You know? Now we're seeing Sicomore Road closing, and we're creating now a TIF that is, and I thank you for that, that is more minimized and back to the central business district of the downtown. So what do you want to do? I mean, you, you know, you can't, you can't be a business owner and, and your investment, and you can't, you want to invest, but you can't, you know? It's hard.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think there's consensus here, Rosa, that we, that we want to get involved. And that, I appreciate your comments on, on what this council has done over the past couple of years in terms of TIF, as, whether it be the Egyptian Theater or some of the other projects. And, you know, we've, we've mentioned the Pappas' projects, but we also mentioned Stage Left, which is, you know, the, the part of the, of Tom Schmidt's property, and I see Tom's here tonight. So, you know, we, we, we have confidence in our downtown. In part and parcel of that is TIF. I think what we're talking about now is, is what differentiates logical expenditures on TIF and what may not, okay? And what percentage we're talking about. I don't know if Rosa answered your question, Mike, or not.
Yeah, thank you very much. Great perspective, and that's what residents are interested in, as to what, what leads to this point. And I completely agree that this, the intent of TIF, it is about time that we are able to partner with local, small property owners in the downtown, because I also agree that that was the purpose, is to work with our downtown partners.
Alderman Smith.
Rosa, Jim, and Johnny, you know, I appreciate you coming forward, I really do. As Alderman Fanouken had stated, we've probably been in there a lot since mom had it, dad had it, and Rositas years ago. I agree with all the other Aldermen. I think this is the perfect project for downtown, and I, I stand behind you. Thank you.
Alder, uh, city manager?
Look, yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I guess like moving forward, and maybe Bill, you were about to get to this, but I, I feel like we need some more clarification on where we fall between the 30 to 50, because I don't want them to keep moving forward with efforts.
Right, right. I was going to say that, but, and maybe to aid the discussion here, the one thing that's been missing from the conversation so far is just the sheer economics of what it takes to develop a parcel or a property like this. And one thing that Mr. Pappas has established in, in talking with the banks, at the council's request, remember when we were first considering the Mooney, now Agora Tower project, the question was, well, how's it going at Cornerstone? How's it going at Plaza de Cal? You know, what are we seeing? Is there a, a return on the investment, are the banks happy and so forth? And I did that and reported back. And it was a revelation to me, you know, TIF is everywhere in the state of Illinois. In Naperville, I dare say that there are different parameter, different criterion parameters than there is here in DeKalb. And the reason we do what we do is tied, I hope, to the economics. So here are the economics in this building as, in a smaller scale than what we encountered at Cornerstone and Plaza de Cal, and we will at the Agora Tower. And it's just real simple. It's real hard to survive, and Rosa touched on this from a different angle, as, as a commercial entity in this day and age in our community. We don't have 2 million people within a 15-minute drive. People have to be committed to shop here, you know, we're, one of our, one of our talismans is every, every opportunity, we, we tout local, shop local, shop local. And even that's hardly enough sometimes, and places do open and close within the first couple of years because they just can't be capitalized enough. So how do you deal with that? Well, you add some cash flow, and the cash flow is a rent. And the rent is upstairs, and that's how it flows. Now, if the Baii family decides to keep this building, and they decide, there are a number of things, they could, they could rent the, the first floor out, they could operate something different there. In good times and bad, that rent, which is going to be paid every month presumably, these are, by the way, you saw it in your background, these are not ramshackle apartments. These are among the best that we have seen in DeKalb, as long as I've been around DeKalb, very well-appointed, very well-laid out. They could have gone for four two-bedroom and just scrunch it in. They decided to expand and allow for some living room and living comfort. So they will get a top dollar for this, especially in the downtown, and that will help. That's what the banks are going to look at. To get to the six-word question, the banks want to know, what happens when the, the till is not ringing downstairs? How are you going to make your payments and how, because there's going to be probably some private equity involved in this? How, how are you going to make this work? That rent check comes in every month, and times four. That's why this is working in the downtown. This is a good formula in DeKalb. 10 years from now, we can look back and say, because we took the chance on these, we made it. And now there's, it doesn't have to be more population, just be that there's a little more buying power, and people can shop downtown, and they can eat downtown more regularly and so forth. But we're not quite there yet. And private sector has to basically buy the commercial to come to their building. So to get somebody to come in, you got to lower the commercial rents. And how are you going to make it if you're lowering commercial rents and you only have a modest amount of turnstile turns every, every day, every month upstairs? And that's a formula that we just haven't tried in the last 20 years. But here's our opportunity. Somebody's taken a chance and proven that it works. I think it's a good approach. I think this is a good project. I think we might stretch on this. I'm not going to suggest what that might be, but I think there might be some middle ground if you're willing to consider that.
Bill, what I'd like to suggest, if, if, if council agrees with me, is what I hear is that there's a consensus that we fully support TIF dollars being utilized for this project. We fully agree that, that we need to support this going forward. What I'd like to suggest perhaps is that you bring forward a, a matrix, if you will, that addresses Alderman Morris's question, and that is, let's, what's this going to mean in terms of allotment of TIF dollars at the 30% level, at the 40% level, and at the 50% level that Rosa had indicated that she felt they needed? And does that make sense? If, if that came back to us, that we would take a look at that, or, or does it not?
I suppose those calculations seem fairly simple. I mean, you know, we know what we're looking at. I think more so we want to look at, how do we want to be using TIF on the whole? And is this going to be an exception? Or, you know, so how far do we really want to go? And so I don't think it's so much the dollars, but, but where we're headed with this and what precedent we're setting, and, and how much they're going to be the exception or not.
Mayor, the, you know, we've been using a 20-year window for the amortization, and you could say it should be 10. Well, that would change it a little bit, but even at 10, actually, this would work, because it looks like at 20 years, we more than get back what the investment would be at 100%. So at 50%, piece of cake. Even, you could have another great recession or two, you'd still make it, because the EAV would be there. Somebody's still be paying property tax and be coming to the city.
So I guess from the super supporters that we heard from first, I'd love to hear what your cap is. And, you know, let's get this done.
Alderman Faver.
So I, I guess what I would like to see, or what I'd like to understand is, I want to see the project go forward. I, I guess, for your investment, I guess you would have to look at what you're proposing, and at what point, what, what's your point of no investment? And, and at that point, that, I guess that's the, the area where we talk is, at what point do we decide that the project just isn't viable?
We'll, we'll, we'll consider that if it's, if it's all right with the council, I'll visit with the Baii family and bring that back.
Alderman Fanouken.
Mayor, I'd like to agree with you, and again, as the city manager bring back that matrix, and let us have some discussions over the, the range of that amount, so we, you know, have a better idea where we'd like to go.
I think that matrix makes sense.
You know, that, that's not to lock in at either the high end of that or the low end of that, but at least it gives us some numbers to talk about and to move forward.
I'm a simple man. I like to look at what my options are, you know? And if those options fit within what the Baii family feels makes sense to them, and we, as a council, feels what makes sense to us as it relates to the utilization of TIF dollars, so be it. Doesn't that make sense?
Yes.
Alderman Verbic.
Absolutely. And keep in mind, we want to encourage even more investment in the central business district. So I think we need to be cautious with regard to how much we approve for each and every project, to hopefully open up that opportunity for more to invest. project, to hopefully open up that opportunity for more to invest.
Correct. So Bill, do you seem to have direction on what this council wants to do with this particular consideration?
I'll do my best.
I know you will. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, now we move along to number four, consideration of a $1,000 general fund grant to offset moving expenses for the DeKalb Area Agricultural Heritage Association, lovingly known as DHA. And before we have City Manager Nicholas speak to this item, we do have one person, Steve Faber, who would like to speak to this item. Steve is the treasurer of DHA. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Bill did a really good job, I thought, of writing up kind of what this was about. It boiled down to is primarily, we knew we were probably going to be moving from that space sometime in the next five years. This happened a little sooner than we'd anticipated, and because we had over 6,000 items that have been registered and donated to DHA, those had to be moved with a museum professional and moved professionally. Black Hawk Moving was gracious enough to reduce their bill by $1,000. And working with the members of the board and former members and donors, they were able to help us out in getting things set up so that the Black Hawk bill didn't end up to be the 4,100 that is in your notes. So it's, this was a cash flow issue to us. This happened, like I said, almost three years prior to where we wanted it, and we certainly would appreciate your support. Thank you.
Any questions of Steve, or anybody? We've had a chance to take a look at this. Background material was excellent, Bill.
Yeah. Where are you moving the?
We have, working with NIU, who we had been working with on some of our program development, and some of their future stuff in the sustainability area since it relates to agriculture, we're moving into the DeKalb Ag Building that's on the corner of Bethany and Route 23.
Thank you.
We'll be there with the DeKalb County Community Gardens.
Thank you.
Does it seem to be a consensus that this request makes sense? I think the head shaking affirmatively means that we're going to approve that. Do we need a vote on that, Bill, at this point? It's a consideration. Would you like a vote?
Unless there's a strong dissenting faction, I think we're okay.
Yeah, there doesn't seem to be consent or dissent, so.
I indicated where it was gonna come from, and we, City Manager has the authority to do that.
We'll move along on that then, positively. Thank you. Item number five, considerations. Consideration of a report of a plan review services provided by H.R. Green from June 1, 2019 through December 1, 2019. City Manager Nicholas.
Thank you. The chief building official who led us in a pledge of allegiance has been doing a sensational job, but she's only been on board since early November, and it took a few weeks just to kind of get, feel for what the most pressing concerns were. Plan review was one of those, but we had to continue to use H.R. Green through November and also through December. And as Ray Munch and I were looking at where we were gonna be at the end of the FY '19 fiscal year, it appears that we're gonna be over that amount that she allowed me to spend a couple months ago. And the biggest part of that went to, happily, to the Project Hammer plans that came in quickly, and they were looking for a quick turnaround, and we had to do it with the services of H.R. Green. So we authorized those, glad we did. Just gonna be over the limit, so, because I asked you for a specific limit, I'm coming back. I trust this will be the last time I come back. I don't enjoy bothering you with this, but I don't have the authority, so I had to come back.
So the limit that you're above is $960.
Well, and I also said that we don't know yet. The H.R. Green was not able to give us a firm number because there were still sprinkler plans that they were working on for the large distribution center. There's back and forth, and they give a review, and then there's some discussion by the person who did the design, and then there's back. So we haven't seen a bill for that work that was done in late December, and it could be up to 5,000. We're just guessing. We don't know, so.
Yeah, I apologize to Bessie Knopfopoulos, who wants to speak to this item.
My mistake.
Your mistake? Okay.
So what I'm asking for specifically, because I don't know the number, is to allow me to pay the bill to H.R. Green, whatever comes from December. And I don't know what that is, but I believe you can trust me for that.
There seem to be consensus that this is fine for our city manager to go over that. Okay, Bill, you've got it.
Thank you.
Okay, now, number six, consideration of remodeling estimate for the new city hall nearing building. Bessie, is this what you wanted to speak to? Okay, okay. And then we'll let Bessie speak, Bill, and then you can have the floor as it relates to our move to the new city hall building. Bessie?
Happy New Year. Before I get started with my, the TIF discussion that you had, that is the best discussion on TIF that I have heard in a long time from the council. I was a little kind of, I don't know about this project, does it really fit in that category? But the fact that you're talking about a matrix and some criteria, that's the direction. And also getting private involvement, that's been a dream of mine for ages, to actually get those apartments above some of the invested in. That's good. That's a good direction. So think of the matrix and the criteria, that's a good one. Okay, here we go. Three minutes is not enough for me to say what I have to say, but I'm gonna try to do the best I can and hit the high points. I am not in favor of the city hall moving to the nearing building. I think where it's being used now is just fine. It's a nice building that's been invested into already, somewhere between 200 and 400,000. And TIF dollars have been expended in that building years ago. I can't remember exactly what and exactly when. But it's a beautiful building, and we need to maintain it, but not for city hall. You're gonna squish things in there that don't belong, and you're going to limit access to people to get to their government. Council and city hall need to be together. Mayor said in his speech, or in his state of the city, that he supports a, he's glad to see the city council supporting the downtown. That's good. But the city council needs to be supporting its primary purpose, and that's good governance. You're not gonna get that separating your city hall and your city council. Not enough input has been given on this topic, and that hopefully that is why it's a consideration. It's been done a little piecemeal of time, a little bit here, a little bit there. That's not the way to make a long-term decision. You're looking at a very short-term solution to a long-term kind of an impact. You're not hearing other considerations. This is way too isolated a way in which to make such a big decision. Access to city hall would be limited. If you look at the cars that are out there now, where were all those cars parked? At the library. It's in there. We've got to stop and think about that one. Parking, or having the city hall at the library, or city council meetings from the library, that's not a very good idea. This block was bought over a period of many years. I'd served on the council for 20-plus years, and it was part of what the councils were doing, to invest in this city block for future building, for this area. And we own it. We own it now. If this new plan does not work, and it won't, I can almost guarantee you that it won't work. I'll bet you my, it just won't work, it's just not very viable. We're gonna end up somewhere between two and five years from now needing a new city hall, needing more tax dollars to be expended on another building, and more property. We already own this. One thought is, that I had in my brain, was to repair this facility, to look at repairing this facility, and share it with other governmental entities. For example, the school district. They could, you've got the TV and everything going, they could have their meetings here too, and they could have offices here too. You could have, in some of the other buildings that we own, other governmental entities that could be here. You've got parking, ample parking, and it provides the foot traffic for downtown, because guess what? This is only a block away from downtown. And you'll have all these people working here, already parked here, ready to go and eat, ready to go and shop and do whatever else, and also bringing in other people. You're making this decision in a very, very isolated fashion, council. Do not do this. It's not the right way to go. God love you, it's not the right way to go.
Thank you.
Thank you. I tried three minutes, maybe, maybe not? I don't know. Happy New Year.
City Manager Nicholas.
Thank you, Mayor. The consideration is a remodeling estimate for the new city hall at nearing building. The city closed on this property on December 27th, following the departure of the last tenant, which is DHA, in the building. And what I wanted to bring your attention to was a list of what we consider to be the essential remodeling tasks, all of which can be paid from revenues from the sale of city properties. We have one small addition to that on the agenda tonight, but there are others pending, as you know. And I broke those down, what the sales were, and also broke down in some detail, thanks to Andy Rye, our director of facilities, who's done a lot of solicitation of pricing for the various categories of repair and upgrading. And they include carpet replacement, and just a little bit of hardwood floor repair, buffing and polishing, some crack filling, interior painting, some electrical and lighting repairs, replacing the front door, some miscellaneous carpentry. And those all added up to $159,500, just by way of comparison. I could have compared it to other things, but as I was looking at our capital list, because this is projected to come out of our capital fund, the large, one large single-axle dump truck and plow would cost about the same amount of money as the remodeling of the nearing building. But there are other costs, and I wanted to be transparent about those. There's a moving cost, although we've done some work with our own staff, and very grateful to the street and facilities department for that. And there could, and there will be some moving that will be done, but heavier items are gonna be probably moved by a professional mover. So I threw a number in there for that. Also, working with Jeremy Alexander, our IT coordinator, we've come up with what we consider to be a pretty reliable range for the startup installation of the broadcast center at the Yasunus Room in the basement of the, in the lower level, excuse me, of the library, which has more than adequate parking outside, I will say, and is part of the conversation we have with the library board, which is also concerned about parking, counted every space. The, so the city manager's request tonight is spending authority up to what we have in the budget, which is $260,000. We projected modestly, in the budget, $250,000. We should exceed that, and that's not including the sale of our property at 213 South Fourth Street. We have some interest in that now, and we hope that we're successful in finding a buyer for that. 223 is next door, that's a two-story, and that has, from the beginning, been considered for ongoing archival storage, and there already is some storage over there, and more than enough room for, I don't know, the rest of the century, probably, because we're not, hopefully not collecting paper records as fast as we did 20 years ago. So that's where we are.
So we have that request from our city manager. Questions, comments? Alderman Morris.
So I voiced this concern a while back, and I think my hope was that, since our initial assessing this idea, that we would have taken a survey of the community and gotten a better understanding of whether the community wants us downsizing or not. And I understand we have extra space here. My biggest concern is that we are downsizing just to need to upsize in the future. And I am really concerned about separating the council chambers from city hall. I think that that's part of what I'm saying, downsizing just to need to upsize in the future. That doesn't sound like a permanent solution, that sounds more like a, we're making this work. That, and one big concern that I have is the range. I don't know, are we not using the range anymore? So, I mean, the three primary things I feel like we're losing, we're losing parking, we're losing meeting space, and we're losing the range, losing all three of those things. And so I'm not so concerned about the expenses that we have in remodeling this building. It seems reasonable to me, those seem like reasonable expenses. But I think that, you know, as we choose to make these expenses, this is the choice to move in that direction without any going back. And I understand we just closed on the building, but I guess I didn't see that as, as being as permanent as actually taking steps to move. So those big three concerns, the parking, the meeting space, and the range, and so I wonder what the opportunity cost is of no longer having a range.
We'll start with the range. So we've been kicking the ball down, or the can down the road for 25, 30 years with our range. I don't know if you've been in the range, and maybe we could take the council down for a trip into our range. It's not adequate in terms of current standards. We meet the minimum standards, obviously, for lead, protection from exposure to lead and so forth. But when you look at it, it kind of tattered, things hanging from the ceiling, not targets, and from the walls. The range is something that was taken out of the budget when the police station was built on West Lincoln Highway. I don't know what the thinking was then, but it was another opportunity that we had, and it didn't happen. The city opens its range for other agencies to use, as you may know. I think the solution ultimately should be a shared and collaborative solution with those agencies. There are alternatives we can use in the short run. We could do something tomorrow if we needed to. We could use other ranges that are around here. We've obviously had a lot of discussion about that, but whether we do it today, tomorrow, or next year, and we can continue to use the range as long as we own the building, obviously, something needs to be done. It's not an adequate range for the kinds of training that people need today. It was set up to be something like what you would do if you were a weekend warrior and you wanted to try your Glock or some type of automatic pistol. You don't have different firing opportunities, you don't get to run, you don't get to do the things that are pretty much standard operating procedure now for police ranges. And that's something that could be done collaboratively, but it will take some money and some investment. Here's another thing to consider. Back in 2003, and I was talking to Councilmember McAdams about this just before the meeting, we started talking about what we were gonna do with our heating and air conditioning system here. This is 2003, so 15, more than 15 years ago. And the only way, this was Hanson Engineers, so very, very reputable international firm, paid a pretty penny for this study. They said by far the biggest constraint for the work that needs to be done to put in new air conditioning and heating in this building, which by the way is day-to-day, is the fact that we have a low height. This is about eight and a half feet high. You'd have to drop duck work below our ceiling, and then you're gonna be working in a cave in some of our buildings, in some of our offices, not in the central hallway, which is a little higher. And it would make, as they said here, for maintaining occupancy after doing such would not be recommended. Also, you would have to vacate the building while that work was being done. Well, here's what it would cost. They gave us four options back in 2003. The lowest one was $1,743,280. The highest was $1,965,040. And one or the other, that's a heavy, heavy price to pay, and that was 2003. And so we kicked the can for a while until in 2013, because of complaints from employees. The city hired another study to be done, and this one was probably a more expensive one, done by Duberry and Associates, one of the world's most formidable architectural firms. They also decided, I think they were urged to do this, to do a space needs assessment of this building, even though at this point we were already, I think, when was the police station occupied, John?
13.
13, so about the same time. So we knew we were gonna go down 65. So we knew we were going to go down, 65, 70 people. The overall cost, there was a range of keeping this building, but relocating us temporarily for about a year until it can be upgraded and redesigned and so forth, was $7.3 million. Cost us a dollar to buy the Nearing Building. And why would we want to upsize city government when our population is falling? What are we telling ourselves? I hope it is larger, I hope the census proves it's larger, but it has been falling for the last three years. And what can we afford? We just barely crawled into the 25% range for our general fund expenditures. We talked about this six months ago, and we made the decision. What, what, where are we going to get the resources? We can't tax people anymore. So all of these issues were part of the consideration. We're not here tonight to reargue the move. I've given you what I think is a very modest proposal for the remodeling of the Nearing Building, and I ask for your support. We have the ability to get going tomorrow. We'd like to be able to, we have, we're working on the technology transfer, have to create a new broadcast center, and the, I assume the council wants to broadcast meetings live. So we're talking about a major investment over in the library. We'd like to get started on that as well, so we ask your support.
Alderman Perkins, what is the plan for the range?
Well, we've been, we've been working on alternatives. The trouble is that the long-range solution is building one, and hopefully getting some other partners to help us do it. NIU uses our range. Right now, tomorrow we could go out to Sycamore Sportsman's Club, we'd have to talk to them, of course, and ask them, but they wouldn't welcome us, I believe, is that correct?
Or Waterman.
Or Waterman, yeah. And we could, we could qualify, but it's not, neither of them are the ranges that we would like to work toward. They're certainly not state-of-the-art.
So we have, we have options.
We have options.
But we really don't have a plan, so to say.
Right, because it's all about the dollars, and we haven't brought anything to you to say, here are some ranges. We haven't asked for a architectural estimate of what it would cost. If we do a standalone, there's a parcel right next to the police station that I understand was purchased so that we could build the range there. We could put up a, you know, it's likely to be an underground type of facility, but there are ways to do that.
Alderman Verbic.
Great work to you and your team. This is exactly what we had in mind, selling off properties that were unused from the city to cover these kinds of expenses, so perfect. What about a private-public partnership for a range? I've been into other communities, and they have businesses where we can go in and shoot various types of guns, and maybe they also sell guns and that kind of thing. Would that be possible, to team up a police department in a private-type adventure?
It is possible. Obviously, we'd want access at, you know, certain times, and we'd have to have a pretty good schedule for that, but...
Yeah, I would have, I would have hoped that the catalyst for this study or this plan, as you allude to, Alderman Perkins, would have happened when we started talking about the movement to the city hall. We've known now for months that we're headed in that direction. So I would say if there is a priority item out of all this, we need to look at that range, if in fact the range is important to what it is that we do in this city. And Chief, I would suspect that from your vantage point, it's very important.
Mayor, it is important.
Yeah.
And it's not that we've stuck our head in the sand, hoping that it will go away.
No.
It's, it all costs money. We just went through a budget process.
Right.
We don't have the money. The priority for the council was streets and fleet. We didn't even propose a range, it wouldn't have risen to that level.
Right.
But it's something that we continue to look at, and what we need is dialogue with our potential partners.
Right.
And I think Councilmember Verbic raises a good point, I think we ought to at least look at that. Communities in other states do that. The more rural you get, the more you find that's a necessity.
Alderman, favor. So, I'll say the positives first. Thank you for putting this together. It's exactly what council asked for. We wanted to save money, we do want to downsize. Again, I don't believe we'll be upsizing anytime soon. In terms of the range, I know that, I know that it's been in disrepair for quite a long time. I know there is a local range that is, you know, local, you've already mentioned one of them, is actually considering, because of the surrounding municipalities, county, I don't know if the state police is part of that, but they're actually talking about building a, I guess, shoot house, where you actually go in and change scenarios, have movable walls and things like that, create different scenarios similar to the training simulator that the fire department has. I don't know, I don't know if they're going to go forward with it. It's elections for that club right now, so there, people are saying different things to, you know, they want to offer up different solutions, but that was what they look at as an income revenue generator for the club, is to offer that to local municipalities and rent that out. But I think, you know, again, we have options. Right now, maybe not that, they're not an indoor range, but they're, if we drive, we can go to an indoor range, but there's several outdoor opportunities right now available. I'm in support of this, thank you.
Alderman Morris asked, one of the components of her question was parking.
Right.
Yes.
So there are two large public parking lots, as you know. There's, there's a lot, unfortunately, sometimes people think it's a public lot, it's not a public lot, connected with the funeral home on Oak. But then just west of there, there are two lots that accommodate as much as we will need, and we would not have room in the Yasunus Room if we needed more than that. And then there's other downtown parking as well. There's another lot to, just immediately south, so there are three lots with about 142 spaces, I believe. I'm trying to remember from memory, but we counted all the spaces. And it was something that we had talked to the library about, because while we would be in the Yasunus Room, others would be using the library for other purposes, and so they just wanted to make sure that those lots, not counting the lots around the west side and the north side of the library, of course, but that would be for patrons only, and then the street, on-street parking, just the public lots that the city already owns.
Alderman McAdams.
Two questions. The carrying costs for this building, if we were to move, that was something that was brought to me by one of the residents.
So, we don't owe money on it, but we, and you would think utilities would be another category, but we, as part of our franchise with Nicor Gas and with ComEd, this is free. We get a bill that shows how many terms we use, but it doesn't cost us anything, and the same would be true when we get to the Nearing Building.
Okay. And then the, one resident brought up that this is a nuclear fallout shelter, and I'm wondering how many residents it would serve and what our plans would be to provide that service, if that's something that we have.
There was a time, maybe 20 years ago, where the down, the lower level, the basement level, was laid out in such a way and kept in such a way that people would be welcome to come in, and if there was a tornado or something like that. In fact, people from Southmore Trailer Park used to come here on a regular basis, whenever there was a heavy windstorm and so forth. People found that there's probably better places, but in terms of our overall emergency operating plan, it's still in the plan. The, for the people who are working in the, in the Nearing Building, there is a basement there, it is below ground, and it would be as, as good as, now, would we continue to offer space in that basement to anybody who wants to walk in from the street? I think not.
Any other questions or comments, Alderman Verbic?
And too, I think a consideration should be, if we're looking at the PEG fee as a way of funding the broadcast system, that that system be available to other entities and groups that would like to use it, and certainly would make even greater use of our government access channel, far beyond what we're doing now with the amount of community content that could be made available.
And the library, part of our lease of the library speaks of not only what happens if we should ever decide not to continue to use Yasunus Room, that broadcast center would then be theirs, as you know, but also it could be used by them when we're not in session, and they are very keen on that.
I think just the sheer fact of utilization of a, of a treasure that we have in this community, and that is a library, to have a first-class facility, and there is just, to me, makes a lot of sense. I know that not everybody agrees with that, but boy, I think it'll be just a great opportunity for us to do some things down there. Yeah, Alderman Fanouk.
You know, while we're speaking of the broadcast center, is there a possible way, at least at the beginning, to reduce that cost somehow and still be able to do what we would like to do in terms of, you know, broadcasting live, whether it be live stream or whatever? And I'm going to, I'm going to turn and look at my counterpart over there, Alderman Verbic, because I know that's his area of expertise.
There are lots of alternatives, and it's certainly up to council what our expectations are and the community expectations for the presentation of our meeting. So it could be a more economical system where it's just one camera with a wide shot of council, a wide shot of staff, and it captures everything in the room with one camera. So what we're looking at here, correct me if I'm wrong, is really to continue what, how we're operating now, and to even further enhance that by having automation available for a better quality broadcast. But certainly, the costs can vary depending on what you're interested in.
That's correct, Alderman. It's a Cadillac broadcast design.
Right, thank you.
Okay. Carolyn, or Alderman Morris, did you get your questions answered, three component parts? Okay, I just want to make sure that we have questions. We have this in our capital budget, it's comprised of two budget line items, I believe, Bill.
Yeah.
You're asking for the spending authority of up to $260,000. Would you like a vote on this?
I'd just like to know that your majority are in favor.
Yeah, or is it consensus that Bill has that authority?
Thank you.
Okay.
Can I recommend, though, that we bring it back next? I mean, you can begin doing the work, but then we bring it back for an official vote next time. I realize that, because it's listed as a consideration, we really shouldn't vote on it.
Right, seriously. Let me ask the question.
Well, you've allocated this for this purpose in the budget.
Okay.
It's in the budget, yeah.
Your chief operating officer is before you to say, I'd like to spend it. And if you say yes, that's, we haven't changed our mind, that's what we intended when we passed the budget and when we discussed the capital projects fund. That is sufficient. You can, I can come back with something else, we're not amending the budget.
No, I understand that, that, I just, with the dollar amount, I wondered if we needed to do a specific vote to that.
Well, that's why I came to you.
Yeah.
I mean, if it was $20,000, that's my authority, even though it's so. I came to you to say, is this how you want to spend that? And there are going to be contracts, we'll follow the city's financial policies as we do every day.
Okay, so in other words, if we have a contract to build a broadcast center at $60,000, that would have to come to us for approval or not?
That's...
That's, I'm just asking.
If you ask, if you ask, I will certainly bring it back, but it's part of, it's part of what you entrust the city manager to do, if you, if you've already laid it out in a budget. If you had no allocation in the budget, and I'm freewheeling, that is against...
That's something different.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion that we do a voice vote.
I beg your pardon?
I'd like to make a motion that we make a voice vote, that we do a voice vote on this, that we don't do a back consensus.
Okay.
Is anybody?
Second.
Okay.
There's been a motion, there's been a motion to have a voice vote on this particular request of our city manager for his spending authority of up to $260,000, which is in fact in our budget. Is there any further discussion? Alderman Perkins.
So is the 260 inclusive of the broadcast center as well?
It's everything I showed you here, so it would be inclusive, yes it is. So $159,500 for the meat and potato remodeling costs, plus the moving, plus the startup installation of the broadcast center, yes.
Yeah.
So with the broadcast center, how did we arrive at the amount for that? Were there various alternatives considered for that? Or was...
We, we did a technical, we walked through, Jeremy Alexander and I, and the director of the library, and looked at a variety of options that would work in the room. It's already Wi-Fi ready. They have one screen down there, we wanted to have multiple screens so that, as it is right now, everybody but the council, the screen's behind the council, so everybody, you would have to turn your necks like in the school board meetings, have to do the same thing. So this, that would give everybody in the room a view of what's being televised, and also, if there are exhibits for you to see.
Yeah, and this is in the background information, too. Alderman Smith.
Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we visited this several years ago, and we had to replace the equipment, that we came up with some rough numbers, that probably Jeremy could intercede on that, but I want to think that occurred.
I can't speak to that. I have a couple of estimates.
It wasn't cheap.
Yeah. The high-end one was the 65.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor that we have a voice vote on this request. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion before we vote? Roll call.
Mayor, the motion is for a voice vote.
So just all in favor, say aye.
Oh, voice vote, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Nay.
Do I hear two nays?
Mm-hmm.
It is approved.
Thank you.
Bill, you've got that approval. Okay, we move along now to resolutions. Item J. J1 is a resolution 2020-001, authorizing a funding agreement with the DeKalb County Economic Development Corporation, DCEDC, in the amount of $35,000 for economic development services beginning January 1, 2020, through December 31, 2020. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved. Second?
It's been moved by Alderman Morris, seconded by Alderman Verbic. We have one person who would like to speak to this item, Bill, before you do, and that is Paul Borick.
Thank you, Mayor Smith, members of council, good evening.
Good evening.
I'm pleased to report that 2019 was an exceptional year for the DeKalb County Economic Development Corporation. Our public-private partnership founded 32 years ago by community and business leaders, including the city of DeKalb, moved to a new location on Sycamore Road. The new office space enables DCEDC to better serve our members and to provide a more professional space to meet with business prospects. This past year, DCEDC worked with the city of DeKalb to attract large-scale development prospects to the Chicago West Business Center. The prospects, you know them well, Project Hammer and Ventus, are international corporations in two significant targets, industry sectors identified for DeKalb County, food manufacturing and knowledge-based technology industries. These projects are projected to generate $900 million of investment in 2.5 million square feet of space, creating more than 1,000 jobs. DCEDC worked with municipalities and local taxing bodies to refine the DeKalb County Enterprise Zone program in order to attract high-impact projects like Hammer and Ventus to DeKalb and the I-88 corridor. Amendments were also approved to attract research and development projects to the West Campus. research and development projects to the west campus of Northern Illinois University. To identify and recruit prospects, DCEDC prepared over three dozen detailed proposals and worked closely with site selectors, real estate brokers, and company officials. In addition to the two mega, the two pending mega projects we've already discussed, six new industrial attraction projects were completed in the county, including two in DeKalb. K&amp;M Tire purchased the 2,600 Worzing Parkway building for a distribution, a Midwest Distribution Center, and Byers Brewing leased space in the SunDog Building for their new brewery. Eight industrial expansion projects were also completed or initiated, including two in the city of DeKalb. Solotex Entertainment Technology Facility was expanded and the Wright Stuff School Supplies purchased a new buil, or purchased a building on Enterprise Drive in the Airport North Industrial Park. These industrial projects amounted to $45 million of investment in a half million square feet of space throughout the county. In addition, 19 commercial projects with capital investments of just under $80 million in construction or improvement and a half million square feet of space were completed. Eight of these 19 were, commercial projects were located in DeKalb, including Cornerstone, Plaza DeKalb, Aurora, Agora Tower, Home Two Suites, Mason Indoor Golf, Planet Fitness, Aldi, Jamra, and Stage Left. The DeKalb County Enterprise Zone Program administered by DCEDC contributed to the four largest projects, complementing private and city investment. Job, job creation from completed industrial and commercial projects exceeded 550. In addition, as part of the DeKalb County thriving comprehensive economic development strategy, DCEDC created action plans to ensure the availability of a talent pipeline that meets the needs of DeKalb County workers and employers. DCEDC just kicked off a branding initiative focusing on identifying and promoting DeKalb's, DeKalb County's unique assets to attract workers, entrepreneurs, and families, as well as investment in business and industry. And DCEDC sponsored a variety of forums to measure and strengthen and forecast the economic health of DeKalb County communities. On behalf of the Board of Directors of DCEDC, as well as dozens of business and community and educational leaders who convene regularly to collaborate on our economic challenges and opportunities, I want to thank the city of DeKalb for their financial support and for the leadership necessary to make accomplishments like this happen. Thank you for your support.
Thank you, Paul. Any other questions? No. Bill? Any comments?
Just support what I've recommended here, the 35,000.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further comments? Roll call. Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanucan?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight aye.
Thank you. That resolution passes. Number two, Resolution 2020-002 authorizing an FY 2020 tourism agreement with the DeKalb County Convention and Visitors Bureau in the amount of $35,000 for tourism activities beginning January 1, 2020 through December 31, 2020. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved. Seconded.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanucan, seconded by Alderman Perkins. We do have one person who would like to speak to that, and that's Brad Hoy. Brad?
Thank you, Mayor Smith. City council members, city staff appreciate the opportunity to talk about something that's near and dear to my heart, and that's the DeKalb County Convention and Visitors Bureau. 2019 was a momentous year for our organization. I think many folks are aware that after many years of tremendous leadership, our executive director, Debbie Armstrong, retired. She was the founding member of the Convention and Visitors Bureau. She retired in April, and we wouldn't be where we are today if it wasn't for Debbie's leadership, support, and passion for promoting travel and tourism and economic development in DeKalb County. We also, shortly after that, lost our interim executive directors. So for a while there, we were without leadership in the office, and thankfully, we had Bonnie Heimbach come in and do a phenomenal job for four months. During that time, she helped us find our new executive director, and I'm, I'm very excited about her joining us two months ago, and that was Courtney Strohaker, who's doing kind of double duty tonight. She's supporting Paul Borick. She's a board member of DCEDC, and she's our new executive director. We also moved to a brand-new facility because of the city hall potentially moving over to the Naring Building. We had to vacate that premises. We miss our friends at Daha who were here earlier, but we're in a tremendous new space at the DeKalb County Outreach Building, which is a perfect fit for a county-wide agency like DC, CC, DCCVB. Just a couple of, I know we have some new council members. Several of you are familiar with our, our discussion and, and report that we have every year. I know I've beaten the path here for various projects and initiatives with the DCCVB, among other things. But I'd just like to give you a brief overview of, of what a certified Convention and Visitors Bureau is. The DCCVB works on behalf of the city of DeKalb and the other DeKalb County stakeholders, municipal entities and in the county itself, to attract leisure travel, overnight visitors into the areas, diverse attractions, destination events, and amenities. We are the sole destination marketing organization. That means, as a certified bureau, we get matching dollars from the state of Illinois. So every invest, every dollar that the city of DeKalb and that our other municipalities and other sponsors put into the organization, we get that money back from the state. That is very, very unique, and only certified destination marketing organizations in the state of Illinois have that distinction. We are one of 46, and the likelihood of having a new one created is not likely, according to the leadership in the Office of Tourism, which oversees all the CBBs. We're the primary point of contact for meeting planners, sport tournament directors such as IHSA, IHSA State Football Championships that we hosted in 2019, and IESA, which we've hosted for 20 years. That's the Illinois Elementary Association, organization that hosts the wrestling tournament here, and we're going to be doing that again in 2020. We also are responsible for primarily focus on markets and regions outside of DeKalb County. If I can use, city manager Bill Nicholas had a quote that I thought was very, very interesting when he was talking about the baees and, and the topic that was on discussion earlier. He mentioned that it's difficult to establish, for establishments to survive in our community, because we don't have 2 million people right outside next door. The CVB, because of our relationships that we have with the state of Illinois, we're able to put marketing materials in front of millions of people through the Ogilvy Center, through the, through Union Station, through the kiosks that we have not only throughout Chicagoland and throughout the state. There's nine tourist information centers throughout the state, but also through kiosks that are in our neighboring states, so the border states, Indiana, Wisconsin, Missouri, and Iowa. We have the opportunity to market to those folks, not only in Chicagoland, and not, but primarily 50 miles outside of the region. This is something that we would not be able to do. Many of the businesses aren't be able to promote themselves. They don't have the resources. But because of the CVB and the investment that the city of DeKalb and the county makes, we're able to, to do that. Just a couple of numbers, and I'll try to wrap things up. Illinois Tourism in 2018, $41.7 billion of visitor expenditures attributed to travel and tourism in the state of Illinois. I think many of you know that the state of Illinois has had some challenges recently with the flight of folks' residents from the state, and then also some of the, well, let's talk about dysfunction within our state legislature. But the biggest thing that's been a success is travel and tourism. That's up from 5.1% from 2017. 117 million visitors came to the state of Illinois and spent money here. That's tremendous. And over 340,000 jobs are supported by travel and tourism in the state of Illinois. Let's get it down to DeKalb County and DeKalb. This past year, $101 million, over almost $1.7 million, was attributed to visitor expenditures here in DeKalb County. That's a new record. That's up about 2.9% from 2017. That contributes $1.69 million to our local tax revenue, which is up 1.5%. 5,200 jobs, 5,200 jobs created through tourism in the state of Illinois, and 590 jobs created in DeKalb County. I think many of you are aware of the Bold Spirits Group that we have here, the tremendous artisans that we have. All of this is because of travel and tourism. It's what draws people from outside of our area to DeKalb County to take a look at some of these tremendous assets that we have, the attractions that we have, and the tremendous events. So I, I just can't say how much we appreciate the, the support that the city has given over the years. I look around this room. We just had the IHSA State Football Championships, another successful venture. Mayor Smith was very much involved in that. I think that I'd mentioned that he was very much responsible for bringing that event to DeKalb and DeKalb County. Bill Fanucan, Bill Nicholas, I see, I see Ray here, I see Dan, I see Brian. All of those folks contributed as, as volunteers to that event. So this is the spirit of DeKalb County. This is the spirit of DeKalb, and we appreciate your support, not only this year, but for years to come. I appreciate that, and thank you very much for the opportunity to talk about it. We're looking forward to big things in 2020.
Thank you, Brad. Any comments? Questions? If not, roll call. Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanucan?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight aye.
That resolution is approved. Number three, Resolution number 2020-003 authorizing a funding agreement with the DeKalb Chamber of Commerce in the amount of $35,000 for the purpose of facilitating community events beginning January 1, 2020 through December 31, 2020. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman McAdams. We have one person who would like to speak to that, and that's the executive director of the chamber, Matt Duffy.
Thank you, Mayor Smith, council, staff, and community members present here. This is, just wanted to touch on some of the events that we do with the city as we step forward. As you can see in the back of materials, renewed DeKalb used to handle some of these things, and now for six-plus years, the chamber stepped up and we always try to be a team player, whether it's, you guys want our office? We can have it. You guys want, you guys wanted us to take on events? We'll do it. We're always trying to take on whatever we can to, to partner, not only with the, the city, the park district, some of these things. So I'm just going to touch on them real quickly here. Breakfast with the Bunny is a partnership with the park district that we do. Great opportunity. And some of the things that are happening in the downtown community, some of the stuff that's happening with potential things in the, coming to our communities with the jobs, they're looking to see what we have here to provide, whether it's bringing Santa to town, whether it's Breakfast with the Bunny, downtown trick-or-treating, farmer's market. These are all the events that we're working with. We did the Memorial Day Parade. We got the Family Fun Fest. We had 40-plus vendors at Hopkins Park, a great event. Police and fire were out there as well. It's, it's a great chance to showcase what we have in our community and people to come out during the summer months. Farmer's Market, this was the 24th year of the DeKalb Farmer's Market, so 2020 will be the 25th year. We had 36 vendors, so we were up a little bit as far as vendors. We did not have any cancellations. So we're try, was trying to do new things with, with all the events we have. Spooktacular, it was over 45,000 pieces of candy that were given out in downtown, approximately a little over 1,000 trick-or-treaters in the downtown area. Again, a lot of people in listening to that, hearing them talk about the, the new improvements that are going on in downtown. I hadn't been down here in a while, and as their kids are trick-or-treating, they're getting a chance to see these things, and obviously, there's more improvements that are going forward. So you want to make sure we get, keep people in the downtown area to, to check these things out. The Santa Comes to Town carriage rides, we had a new carriage. We had a full, great carriage and a line of people out front of the Egyptian Theater, a good partnership with them, providing hot cocoa, a chance to visit Santa and go on carriage rides. And then we also had our Taste of the Season event. This was the third annual Taste of the Season event, and for those that participated, we had 17 different businesses in downtown. Again, people making their way around the downtown area, sampling different foods, different drinks. We had 20 different local businesses that contributed food and drinks, a chance to experience what was down there. And again, the, we had over 200 attendees that were participating in the event this year, and again, a lot of the same thing, groups of people coming around going, "I've never been in this place," or "I didn't realize this was down here." And, "Oh, wow, Byers Brewing Company, what a, what a great asset in downtown." So it's really, a lot of the things we're doing is trying to showcase some of the great work that's happening in, in the city of DeKalb, with the park district, all those types of things, and we look forward to continue to, to partner with the city on this going forward in 2020.
Thank you, Matt. Any questions of Matt? And if not, we have a motion on the floor in a second. Roll call, please. Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanucan?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight aye.
That resolution passes. Before we move on to Resolution number four, I'd just like to say that, you know, we've used the word collaboration quite a bit tonight, and the three folks who just spoke, Brad Hoy, Paul Borick, and Matt Duffy, these guys have been so involved with us collaboratively. Matt and Paul, I think both work with our air, airport committee. They work on our EDC committee. Brad chairs our enhancement commission. And gentlemen, I can't thank you not only for what your organizations do and how you collaborate with the city, but what you individually, taking the time out to, to help us in the city of DeKalb. I really appreciate it. So on behalf of this council, I hope they would agree that, you know, we, we really thank you. So let's move along to number four, Resolution 2020-004 authorizing human services agreements with local social service agencies for human services funding beginning January 1, 2020 through December 31, 2020. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Favor. Any discussion? Ald, city manager Nicholas?
Just, as I mentioned in the background, I actually did mention this in the background. Joanne Rouse is in the audience. She, every year is tireless in, in our behalf in working with local human service agencies, as, as well as managing our CDBG program and so forth. And so she has good relationships, good contacts, works very hard so that everyone knows about this program and can make a proposal. This year, we had 16 applications. Thirteen of them were returned. This is not unusual, but we had some, a few new ones. There's a chart in your background-
Yes.
-which shows 14 different agencies and how the $150,000 that was budgeted in the FY 20 budget spreads across those 14 agencies. We feel that they all meet the, the thresholds that are identified in your background also for, for need, and we recommend your approval.
And we appreciate all the work that Joanne, that Joanne Rouse does in our community development department on this. Joanne, I see you're here. Thank you very, very much. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanucan?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes. Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Seven aye, one absent.
Yes.
Alderman Smith had to recuse himself.
Alderman Smith recused himself because he works for one of those agencies. So he felt that it was comfortable for him to recuse himself. So you might want to get him back in here so we can move along to number five. Resolution 2020-005 authorizing the waiver of competitive bidding and payment to lift off for the renewal of the city of DeKalb Microsoft Office 365 subscription in an amount not to exceed $40,956. Motion, please.
So moved.
Seconded. It's been moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Favor. City manager Nicholas, please.
Thank you. This is the third year of a three-year agreement. The council in 2007- The council in 2017 locked in a three-year price, but did not at the same time do the other related step, which is to deal with the renewal of annual costs, so we've come back every year. This is the last year we will in this particular contract. This subscription will be rebid this year for 2021, and we recommend your approval. The price is a locked-in price.
Any discussion? Questions? Roll call.
Yes.
Fanoukian.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight eye.
That resolution is approved. Number Six, Resolution 2020-006, adopting a public mural policy for the city of DeKalb. Entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Seconded.
Been moved by Alderman Morris, seconded by Alderman McAdams. City Manager Nicholas.
I pointed out that there are a few changes from what you saw as a consideration last time, and they're all directed by our city attorney, Matt Rose, who gave this a line-by-line review, and in light of recent federal case law dealing with the private prerogative to display art, particularly art that's not being funded by public bodies, we had to make some changes to comply with the law. That's, those are the only changes we've made. So, here's how it breaks out. John, correct me if I'm wrong, that where a private property owner, whether seen, their property can be seen from a public way or not, wants to do a mural and wants some public support, a public grant for that, wants to meet that one-to-one match, generally, they're going to shed their, a good part of their prerogative. There is some negotiation, whether it's public or private, to talk about the content so that it's more or less agreeable. We're not going to tell an artist to draw a stick figure in a certain way, but this is a vague area in the law, as you might guess, and so there is some, there are some standards for negotiating in that area, but we're not otherwise going to, we have not otherwise proposed changing what we presented to you the last time. The Citizens Enhancement Committee, which worked on this for the better part of a year, is supportive.
Any questions? Any comments? Alderman Morris.
Sorry, I did not see the backup. So, to clarify, you took out the part where it was like, "Oh, you can't put stuff on your house."
Yeah.
Right? Okay, because that bothered me anyway.
You can't drop butterflies and things like that.
I was like, "What? I'm going to do what I want on my house." Okay.
But if you're going to do butterflies and you want our money, we might have a say, and the council actually will approve all grants, so you get to look at the art and you see the application and talk to the people.
I'm actually much happier with those changes.
And this is, you know, and this is just part and parcel of what a commission like Enhancement brings to us. We take a look at it, we run it through our city attorney for painting on houses or whatever, or not painting on houses, and we bring this back. So, it's been moved and seconded that we adopt this public mural policy. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight eye.
That resolution is approved. Number Seven, Resolution 2020-007, authorizing an amendment to Resolution 2019-108 for the transfer of two rolling stock public transit vehicles from the city of DeKalb to Pace. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Seconded.
Been moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Fanoukian. City Manager Nicholas, please.
This is a cleanup item, and it's something we need to do because the resolution touches on federal funding, and we had taken this to the council a couple months ago, and there was an error in the calculation of what the federal share would be of the remaining value of the two buses, and then there was also an error in the calculation of the federal So, the changes that are in the attached resolution will make that right.
Any discussion on this cleanup item? If not, roll call, please.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanoukian.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight eye.
That resolution is approved. Number Eight, Resolution 2020-008, authorizing the sale of real property located at 315 North 10th Street. That's PIN 08-23-258-011 in the amount of $6,000. Motion, please.
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Morris. City Manager Nicholas, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Just another small, narrow residentially zoned property that is of interest. We did a little back and forth and put a floor under our asking price at six, and that's what was offered, so we have a tentative agreement with your approval.
Gosh, we've done a credible job of getting some of these properties that have sat there many times for years off of our rolls, so that's, that's pretty good. Any further discussion on this? Roll call.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanoukian.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight eye.
That resolution passes. Now, we move on to ordinances. We have no ordinances tonight on second reading, however, we do have several on first reading. The first one is Ordnance 2020-001, authorizing boundary modifications to the area known as the DeKalb County Enterprise Zone, vacant ground addition, option two. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Been moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Fanoukian. City Manager Nicholas, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The first four of the five ordinances on your agenda tonight are all connected to an area of a little over 500 acres just south of Gerler Road and just south of the Project Hammer development, and as councilors are aware, we've been engaged in conversation now for six months with a major knowledge-based company called Project Ventus, which identified, that's a code name, in the background report. And these four ordinances touch on the requirements of the enterprise zone, as it has been recently amended or is going through a process of amending. You would be one of the first to touch on that tonight, and the other designating communities would be doing so as well. There was a public hearing that was held by the Enterprise Zone Administrator in the last two weeks, and there was no objection to this. Here's, in a nutshell, what's being asked. First of all, to include that land area, those 500 acres, because Gerler Road is presently the southern boundary of the enterprise zone in the city of DeKalb. And there is room in terms of the overall acreage allowed for, allotted for enterprise zone activity in the county of DeKalb, and the Advisory Committee, which is sort of the council of the enterprise zone for DeKalb County, approved the idea of expanding the territory. The state of Illinois now needs some action. They need a couple ordinances. In this case, in fact, we're amending the Constitution and we're amending later legislation dealing with intergovernmental agreement. What's the Constitution? It's the, it's the original designating document that was signed by the seven entities that organized the enterprise zone. And then the ordinance after this, which I'll just basically touch on, then touches an intergovernmental agreement that followed two years on, back in 2016. The first one was 2014, then 2016, by the participating communities. So, this first ordinance, 001, the first one of the year, expands the territory and amends the original document that organized the enterprise zone. We strongly urge your support tonight on both readings.
I appreciate your, all of the work that you've done on this, Bill, on this and the other three that we're going to be considering. So, we have a motion on the floor and a second to approve this on first reading. Alderman Morris.
This may feel a little bit tertiary, but I think the residence right there, I have a friend who lives right there, and she has mentioned that when she wanted to put up her fence originally, she was given a very hard time by the city, and so she simply wanted to know if, and I imagine the council would be very supportive of this, if she ends up with something across the street, if the city would be more open to, I think it was, that they needed to have it rezoned in order to allow them to put up appropriate hedges or whatever, so it's not to ruin their view so badly.
Well, I would say this is not the moment to negotiate with.
You're right, right.
Yeah.
I just want to bring up that concern.
But we're open to discussing, and we have maybe a different outlook, and we're happy to talk to anybody.
So, I just, I guess I want to know if we're going to extend it to that area, you know, I want to know that we're going to still take care of our residents.
So far as I know, this area, if you looked at the map, does not have one domicile.
No.
These 505 acres.
Not even on the very corner there.
No.
The pink zone? The pink diagonal lines? I believe there is one house on the corner there, and that's exactly the one that I'm talking about. So, it's yellow.
What's the location of the house?
Just south of Gerler Road.
On the west side of 23?
Correct, yep.
This does not include the west side of 23.
Right, right, but it's their view, is what I'm saying.
Oh, I see, but what we're talking about tonight is a land area that is designated with the hatch lines in your exhibit.
Sure.
So, what you're saying is, can we trade that consideration of a fence against Project Ventus?
No, no. I'm not saying anything like that. I just want to make sure that we're taking care of the residents.
We will.
Who are going to be across the street from it.
It's not a resident of DeKalb right now, but if she is south of 23, or excuse me, west of 23 and south of Gerler, she's not a resident of DeKalb. She might be in DeKalb County.
Okay.
But we're happy to talk to her and find out.
Sure, sure.
Any further comments or questions? Roll call, please.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanoukian.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight eye.
I'd like to move that we waive second reading and approve.
Seconded.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanoukian and seconded by Alderman McAdams that we waive second reading and approve this ordinance. Any further discussion on that? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanoukian.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight eye.
That ordinance is approved. Let's move along to ordinance number two, Ordnance 2020-002, approving a second amendment to the DeKalb County Enterprise Zone intergovernmental agreement. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Seconded.
Been moved by Alderman Fanoukian, seconded by Alderman Morris. City Manager Nicholas, would you like to explain this one?
I touched on this one, it is a companion to the first one, and we recommend your approval.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanoukian.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight eye.
That motion passes on first reading.
Like to move that we waive second reading and approve.
Seconded.
Been moved by Alderman Fanoukian and seconded by Alderman Perkins that we waive second reading and approve this ordinance. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Fanoukian.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight eye.
That ordinance is approved as presented. Number Three, Ordnance 2020-003, amending the property tax abatement qualifying criteria and definitions in the DeKalb County Enterprise Zone. Motion, please.
So moved.
Seconded.
Been moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Verbic. Any discussion?
Just to say for the record, Mayor, if I may.
Yes, I'm sorry.
So, these, number three and number four on your background now are extending into that new land area south of Gerler, the benefits that you designated or approved before the holidays. And those deal with, specifically, developments, mega developments, I guess you would say, within three and a half miles of the center line of I-88. There are three entities in DeKalb County that would benefit from this, DeKalb, the county of DeKalb, and the town of Cortland. No one else is that close to the center line of I-88. And these are, this is a hot corridor, if you will, where companies along.
Certainly is.
Project Ventus would be interested in exploring.
Been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight eye. Adye.
Like to move that we waive second reading and approve.
Second.
Been moved by Alderman Finuchin, seconded by Alderman Morris, that we waive second reading and approve this ordinance. Any further discussion?
Roll call, please.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Faver.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Finuchin.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Adye.
And finally, in this set of four, number four, Ordinance 2020-004, approving a third amendment to the DeKalb County Enterprise Zone intergovernmental agreement. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Faver.
This, one comment, maybe it's off the cuff, but this is the third and hopefully the last one for a while. You've been very patient and very supportive, and I appreciate that. And this just amends the intergovernmental agreement that is a companion to the designating agreement. And likewise, we ask for your approval on both readings.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Faver.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Finuchin.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Adye.
Like to move that we waive second reading.
Second.
And approve.
It's been moved by Alderman Morris, seconded by Alderman Perkins, that we waive second reading and approve this ordinance. Any further discussion?
Roll call.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Faver.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Finuchin.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Adye.
That ordinance is approved as presented. Number five, Ordinance 2020-005, amending Chapter 35, towing, Chapter 52, offenses against public peace, safety, and morals, and Chapter 64, smoking regulations to conform to new cannabis and tobacco laws. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Smith.
I have a question.
Yes.
Sorry, is it okay? Under, you know, one of the last, second to last bullet here, it says, "No cannabis smoking in any public place, including tobacco smoke shops." And then in parentheses, "The state law would allow cannabis smoking in a smoke shop, but it allows the city to prohibit it." And I guess I wonder about that, I wonder if with our boundary rules already, would any of the smoke shops that exist be able to benefit from this? I just, I'm curious about the implications.
It's, we're so new, I guess, into this area, Carolyn, that the thought here from our city attorney was that although you can smoke tobacco in tobacco smoke shops if you're 21 and over, the thought was, the council had never indicated that we wanted people smoking cannabis in one of our commercial establishments, so if that's where you want to go with this, we'll have to amend this.
I guess I just wanted to hear what anyone else thought on that.
I don't know, I can add a few comments. Yeah, like, this is kind of a new frontier for all of us, and it's a great social experiment, but some of the things I've heard from some of the smoke shop owners is, why would they want someone to come in and not buy their stuff and just sit around and smoke their own stuff all day? You know, that doesn't really, not a very good business decision. I have heard that from, on this issue as well. On the other hand, the other side of the coin, I guess, is people may live in facilities or apartments where a landlord prohibits it, and there is, in some cases, a need for a place for people to go to be able to engage in this activity. So those are kind of the two sides of the coin.
Alderman Verbic.
I am interested in striking both bullets five and six, again, which fly in the face of state law. I don't believe that we would have tremendous success enforcing this over time, and I view it as very difficult to enforce, so I would make a motion to amend this amendment by striking bullets five and six to remain consistent with state law, and look for a second.
Second.
Okay, the bullet number five is the no cannabis smoking in any public place.
Correct.
And number six, no person under 21 may possess cannabis paraphernalia.
Correct.
Okay, so the motion is to amend this consideration by striking those two bullet points. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion on that?
I'm sorry, who was the second, please?
I'm sorry, seconded by Alderman McAdams. It was moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman McAdams.
We should, oh, I'm sorry.
Alderman Faver.
I was just going to ask, I'm not an expert in the new cannabis law, so I was going to ask, what is the, I mean, I've read through the one up above, I know you're not supposed to be smoking in public, if someone can observe you and see what you're doing, is kind of the way it's worded. So I don't know, is, does the state law say that you can smoke cannabis in any public place?
No. You're not allowed to smoke in public places at all.
So why are we removing that, other than the smoke shop?
Because, one, it's redundant with what the state already prohibits, and then the second portion of it prohibits something further that we could be allowing, and if we.
Yeah, and in regards to the second, I was going to say, I'd be willing to pass it on, you know, first reading and wait for feedback from smoke shops or anyone else that has any input to say whether, but I agree, if I owned a facility and somebody said it's now legal to drink beer without a liquor licensing, you wanted to come over and sit in my bar and drink beer that you brought in, I'd kind of be upset about that.
Sure. I wonder if, I mean, wouldn't it be up to the establishment owner to say, "Oh, no, we don't do that here?"
True, but then now we're going to get into, are there bagging fees? Are we going to have some bagging fees where we can charge?
May I suggest I bring this back in a revised form, according to what council member Verbic recommended, but no vote tonight till I can, we can have the city attorney, there may be two or three or five places, so you're not sure what you're voting on. And also, maybe have some kind of a background memo from the police chief to see if he has some concerns about this.
Well, when cannabis was first brought up several months ago, after the governor signed it, we said this was sort of uncharted territory, and I think we have, in our discussions about cannabis, in the few opportunities that we've had, we found that to be true. If the city manager feels comfortable that he'd like to bring this back, I would ask that if Alderman Verbic and Alderman McAdams would withdraw their motion to amend at this point.
Sure.
I would bring it back based on council member Verbic's recommendation, which got a second, and you can discuss that, reject it or what, we'll itemize what the impact of that is in terms of detailing.
So you're asking that we not consider this under first reading at all?
Yeah, I'll clean it up, according to what the council's directing.
Okay. Who made that motion?
The appropriate motion might be just to table it for now.
Motion withdrawn.
Okay.
Alderman Morris.
I guess the questions that I have when it comes back are, you know, so I looked at the smoke shops in the town, and it was like, how many smoke shops do we have? Who's this going to impact? And I wonder if any of the smoke shops even exist within the locations that cannabis would be allowed, because if they're, you know, within X number of feet from school, then it may not be allowed at that location anyway.
Well, the allowing part is where you can sell it, it's all recreational to the public. The smoking part could be well beyond that.
Would someone like to table this? Excuse me.
Well, and I guess the other question that I would have, too, is, can the shop themselves decide, so that we don't need to tell them how to run their business? So that's just, I guess, a question, a legal question.
It's also a political question, yeah.
Sure.
Alderman Faver.
I don't know if he was going to answer the question, or?
Oh, I guess I was thinking, for the future, like, when they bring it back, I want, if you guys can address it then, but we can table this for now.
Then I guess what my question is, is now that cannabis is legal in Illinois, there are stores, I know there's for sale in Chicago, I don't know if the Rockford store opened or not, do we need to have something on the books, or is it just basically, it's kind of free rein in DeKalb today because we don't really have anything on the books?
State law would apply, absent anything that the city does. So there are prohibitions in state law against smoking in a public, or possessing at a school bus, or in a vehicle, and certain conditions and things like that, that are applicable, regardless of what the city might or might not do.
I'd feel comfortable, though, if we had, if we did have a city ordinance on this, and given the fact that we've already had, what, three or four indications of interest for dispensaries, you know, at this early time, so.
Yeah, I wasn't, I was just saying, if we tabled this today, what happens to the general public?
In the meantime, state law is.
So their state law is overriding right now in the city.
We can wait two weeks.
We're simply asking to table, so that city manager Nicholas can bring something back for consideration.
I'd like to move that we postpone this until the city manager can bring this back for further discussion.
I'll second.
Been moved that we, by Alderman Finuchin, seconded by Alderman Faver, that we postpone consideration, a first reading of this ordinance. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Verbic.
Yes.
Faver.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Finuchin.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Adye.
And we look forward to you bringing, you're bringing that back, city manager Nicholas, for consideration, a mixed bag, for sure. Now, reports and communications, this is the place on our agenda where our alderman and mayor has a chance to make any reports, and I would start with our first ward alderman, Carolyn Morris.
Thank you. I just want to say, as far as the intoxicating liquors thing goes, I think there's probably some urgency to that. I realize we want to review the entire policy, but I think we probably need to step on that to help businesses move forward with doing business. In talks with the Antigliden North Collaborative Group Community Services portion, we had tossed around the idea of a farmer's market in the AGN area, and I think the mayor had also mentioned this when I brought it up with the Chamber of Commerce, so, I don't know, I think that's another good idea to maybe be talking with the chamber a little bit more about. And I just began my master's in public policy and administration program this week, so I am really excited to be able to add that to what I can do here, so.
Great.
That's it.
Wonderful. Alderman Finuchin.
No report this evening.
Alderman Smith.
No report.
Alderman Perkins.
No report.
Alderman McAdams.
No report.
And Alderman Verbic.
No report.
And Alderman Faver.
No report.
I have one final, one small item, for the benefit of the public, let it be known that the evaluation process for our city manager is currently in the hands of this city council. Each alderman is being asked to make his or her evaluation. Later this week, those individual evaluations will be given to me, the mayor, and working alongside human resources, an overall synopsis will be arrived at, and council will share those results with Mr. Nicholas at an executive session in February. Does that sort of fall into line with what we all understand? Okay, good. City clerk Fizikas, anything to report?[1708.66]